At Council Plus Savings Bank, you can get the protection you need from the bank you trust.
The only thing more important than knowing your money is safe is the assurance that your identity has protection. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
First of all, I know that winter's kind of winding down and there aren't going to be very many fires in the fireplace, so I gave you as little kindling as I could come up with. No, I hit you with a blizzard of paper, and it's more in terms of communication than anything else. First of all, there's this little packet that looks similar to the budget. This is replacement pages. Where you put one on the bottom, you put that in place, the two that you originally got in the notebook. There's a few in there that address some of the questions that came up, some of the questions that I've had in my conversations with individual council members, and kind of brings us back into place. This thick set with the clip is the wage information on each individual employee. It follows the same departmental pattern as what the budget table of contents does. So first is the groups of police, then fire, then those that come after that. So that's there for your information. I was asked to bring a copy and distribute a copy of the Adoption of Budget Certification City Taxes Form that we send to the state. This is not a final copy until the council has adopted the budget, and then we go through, double-check it, to make sure it's right before we send it off to the state. That is due in their offices and in the county on the 15th of March. Then finally, there's this single sheet that's got some yellow highlights on it. This is something I probably should have had when the budget first came out. It's a summary of all the funds, revenues, and expenditures. And there's some yellow highlights on there that are what might be considered anomalies, but I think they're points that if I go through and explain those, they'll give you some idea of what's going on in the overall budget. So given that as an introduction, I want to start off by reiterating that the budget is a planning document. It's not in any way a scriptural reference or a holy document that has to be worshipped or venerated. It's simply a plan, and it's the financial plan for the city to achieve its goals, to do the things it wants to do, as directed by the council, the mayor, and all the department heads and people that have a say in it. The first iteration of this is usually done anywhere from nine to 10 months before it actually starts. And it ends then, the budget itself ends, up to 20 months after we've first done this draft. So the point is that, given that timeframe, things change. And that's why the budget is a plan, because there are some things in this document that cannot change. The tax levy is one thing. The tax levy, once this budget is adopted, is established. The other things that are in there can be amended. They can be moved, they can be changed. If plans change, if priorities change, if there are emergencies, if there are changes in assumptions, things can change. But we do need to set an annual plan on what we're going to do financially, and that's this budget. Again, our property tax levy, the city's portion of the overall levy, is not going up at all. It's going to stay at $17.75 per $1,000 of taxable value. Now, for residents, that taxable value is about 58% of the estimated market value because of something called rollback, that sets a different level of use of that market value for taxable purposes. Residents pay about 58%, or use about 58%. Commercial and industrial properties, on the other hand, get a taxable value at about 90% of their estimated market value. So in effect, commercial and industrial properties use a little bit higher portion of their property value as a basis for their taxes. Even though the levy rate is not going up, we have had some increases in value, primarily in commercial areas, so that we will be getting about a 3.3 increase, 3.3% increase in tax revenues of about $1.431 million. And that's worked into the budget as well. I was going to say, I don't know what I said, but I'm sorry.
[laughter]
We had some questions last time. I was asked about the rental permit numbers. The rental permit numbers had, I went back and checked first of all, and those are the numbers we did receive originally, but we checked into that. Both Greg and Steve sat down, took a look at those. And what they had to be based on was a number of units. We're looking at about 8,400 units registered at our $35 level. The 2016 budget was set at a $50 level. It finally ended up at 35. So from the 3.35 that was there, it's going to come down, but it did go up from what we had in the budget. So that correction is... Excuse me.
So if you're not following what Dan said there, when I did the budget last year, the talk at the time was that the rental inspection cost would be $50 per unit, and so that's what I used to budget. But when the ultimate final ordinance passed, it was reduced, so you can't really look at that.
And again, that simply underlines, sorry, that simply underlines that this is a plan. And we work from this plan to try to make things happen, but if things change, we have to adapt. We were asked about the plumbing permits at $39. That was a typo. We missed the three zeros at the end of that. So we have a little bit more revenue in the plumbing permits, and that's in the revised sheets that we gave you. So the corrected packet pages, pages 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 64, 76, and 77 are out there. Let's see. I had a bunch of questions from an afternoon visit with one of the council members, and I wanted to respond to those questions. First of all, in the sewer fund, on page... 80, no, 79, I think.
79, I think.
Page 79, yeah. That second line down says landfill fees, and that's the way it is in the general ledger. What that really is, is disposal fees for places that come and dump gray water into our processing system because they don't have a place to put it. It's been in that $30,000, that was only $3,200, $110,000. $4,000 was budgeted. We're a lot higher than that this year, at about $245,000, because the city of Harlan had a problem with their plant, not being able to take a certain waste from a certain industry in the community. And so that was trucked down here because we have the capacity and the ability to deal with that. We dealt with that until they got the problem fixed and were able to deal with that. So that really should be at about $4,000. The windfall this year stays with the sewer fund, but it was a windfall in effect, and it is disposal fees, not landfill fees. Out of the local option sales tax, there was a question about funds that had already been transferred that showed in there. Let me see. Um... Page...
65?
65, I think, yeah, okay. Page 65, it shows a transfer out of about $4.3 million in 2015, and I was asked about what that was. That was actually the result of a resolution passed by the council, number 1557, on February 23rd of 2015. And a large portion of that, about $3.6 million, went to the sewer fund as an appropriate expenditure of sales tax to try to mitigate and phase in the increase in sewer rates. Rather than jumping right up, that money was transferred in order to smooth out the increase in the rates. There will still be increases, and they will ramp up in order to make the sewer fund begin to pay for itself a little more. But that was there. And then there was about $700,000 that got transferred to the debt services to assist with payment of sewer debt that was out there. So that's what that transfer was. There was a request for individual wage information, and again, that wage information has gone out. Yes, sir?
I'm sorry for the interruption, but since we were on that line item for the transfer from the local option sales tax, I asked you what the reason for the transfers of 8.7 million in 2014 and 4.1 million in 2013. Were you able to track that down, or...
At this point, no, I have not done that yet.
Okay.
My estimate would be that those were capital costs that went to sewer and roads. Now, they do show up above in those areas, but I will look at those and get you a better answer on that.
Thank you.
There was a question about page, actually about page 67 in the CAFR, to know about what that transfer of local option sales tax funds was, and that was that rate mitigation and the debt service payments. Transfers of other funds for the debt services came from TIF in order to pay things that TIF projects and TIF districts were able to support, and that occurs each year as well. There's a question about some transfer of money from the Iowa West Foundation and Caesars to the hotel motel tax fund. In the agreement that put together the whole MAC district, and the MAC and the Bass Pro and all that, there was an agreement that for a period of time, both Iowa West and Caesars would contribute if there were losses, and they would contribute up to $75,000 per year, each entity. And the losses have been to the point that those support payments have been called in every year as far as back as I can see. That, I think, though, will end, if not last time. Yeah, so it ended at the end of 2015, so we will not be getting those again. Let's see. If there were other things, I've missed them out of my notes. Let me then do a review of this summary page and tell you a little bit about the anomalies in that page as you put it together. When we do a budget, I tend to focus on the individual funds, because those are the ones that usually have goals and things that need to be done, things that need to be met, projects that you can put your finger on. Summaries are a little harder to get excited about because the bottom line can mean any number of things. It could be use of resources, it can be a deliberate profit, if you will, because we're building up to something later. You just never quite know. But in there, first of all, you've got the $33,984 at the top of the 2016 revenues column in the general fund. The reason I want to highlight that is that what we've done in the actuals for '14 and '15, and now in the proposed revenues for '17, is to reflect the transfers of dollars from the emergency levy and the employee benefits levy into the general fund, because that's where they end up in the first place. And what you can see, if you look at the bottom line for those, at the bottom line for the general fund, rather than showing in 2016 $33,900 as revenue against $50,588 in expenditure, we're showing $50,459 in revenue against $52,281,952. That's a little more realistic, in that if we need to cover that extra $1.8 million, we have the gaming funds and we have the hotel motel tax funds available, once we've taken a look at what our capital contributions from those funds are going to be. So that's the first thing, is that anomaly in the revenues there is simply because that number has not reflected the transfers from other funds in other years. It always has to when the actual numbers come up, so that's why it shows in '14 and '15. Tax increment district fund goes from $5 million down to $3.6 million. And what really happens there is that some things come offline, as far as TIF. We have a drop in the metro crossing TIF that's coming in, because we can only collect TIF for obligations that we have. We can't just collect it because it's out there. We have to have some kind of obligation to be paid with that, be it a bond, or a contract, or an agreement that has to be certified. So we're going from $1.268 million down to $245,000 on page 69, because that's what we've certified is what we need. Same thing in the Mid-America Center District, is that we're going from $1.5 million down to $788. That's a combination of things. That's a little bit of a change in the obligations, but it's also anticipating the change in the district with the removal of the spine from the MAC district and putting that into the Bluffs Venture or Bluffs Vision District. So that's going to make a change in what that MAC Center produces. So that's why that tax increment financing revenue looks a little different. The debt service fund went up a little bit, even from the last time through, and that's basically because when I was putting the budget together, I didn't put the transfers from TIF into that fund as revenue. So that's up about $700,000 from what we originally had in that fund. Then we go down to the employee benefit levy fund, the emergency tax levy fund. Again, that's where you see those transfers, that in '16 it shows zero. And for '17, it shows the transfers that we expect to make from those funds to the general fund, and that will make a difference. Right below that local option sales tax fund, the difficulty we have there is that we've got $9.4 and $10.6 million coming in respectively in '16 and '17, but those go to capital projects. And those capital projects have not yet been put together and put in there. So that will happen. That certainly, of course, affects the bottom line for net operations. But as we get ahead of our budget system over the next couple of years, that will resolve itself, and we'll see that both revenue and expenditure budgeted to make some things happen. Again, the tax increment financing districts fund...
Dan?
Yes?
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That's why I'm here.
In talking about the impact of the CIP upon those entries that haven't been made, why did you not take the projected numbers out of the CIP currently in force?
Well, I didn't really have any numbers from the CIP, given that the sales tax for '16 shows a lot of direct expenditures that I simply didn't have available.
Okay.
It probably could have been done, but to use old information to try to do new budgeting, sometimes works, sometimes doesn't. Okay. Again, the tax increment financing district fund expenditures show that decrease in obligations that are out there. The debt service fund, again, shows decreases in obligations. Part of that is that in '14 and '15, what we show as expenditures were actually prepayments of bonds, the proceeds of which came from other bond sales, so they were refinanced bonds. Sometimes you'll sell a refunding bond, and that bond then makes an expenditure out of the debt service fund to pay off the bond that you refinanced. We didn't do any refinancing in either '16 or '17, and so those expenditures are significantly And that's, I think, all the highlighted spots in the summary. According to the agenda, we will be requesting that you consider approving the budget this evening. That's something that only you can do. I can't do that. Dick can't do that, although I don't know that Dick would want to. But we're going to ask that that be done. I'm here right now to stand for questions and respond to what I can. I will be here this evening also, in case there are public questions that need to be responded to.
If I could, Dan, you provided some good perspective about differences between accounting practices from prior years and the instant product that you have together here. And we each received kind of an interesting email from Sam Irwin, and he notes that he contacted you about the budget. And he says that there were some changes in practices that were mandated by the state. Is that an accurate characterization? And if so, could you kind of highlight what those changes were?
I don't know that we talked about any changes that were mandated by the state. There are state requirements for how the budget is done and what it reports, and that primarily deals with the property tax levy. And then the auditors will look at the state report. When they do their audit, they don't look at our budget and try to compare. They look at the state report, and they make sure that everything corresponds to that, because that's the legal barometer. Otherwise, I don't recall us talking about any state mandates.
No problem. Did you get it? I didn't get an email from Sam Irwin.
Well, I was just going to say, actually, since you brought that email up, I thought, mercy God, I should have looked. So you didn't get a he request in there that it be like entered into what's at the very end? I didn't print it off. That it be entered in as a, again, I don't even remember how you worded it. Should we just forward it to you? What should we do with this? Is that the right way to do it?
Receive and file, is that what you want?
I don't, I mean, I guess, I thought you probably included what you needed, because he sent two emails. Did you get any of them? One has to do with another item on here, too. I can forward it to you right now.
Asked that these email documents be included as a record, and that there is for written documents for the council. So, okay, so I guess, yeah, he's asking for the email itself to be entered into public records.
Do you want me to just send it to you, mercy, and then you can...
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we talked on Friday for about 15 minutes, and it was, I thought, a very cordial That's about all I can tell you about it.
No problem. No problem. And we...
What's the gist of the email? You kind of have me at a disadvantage on them.
You want me to send it to you? If I send it to you right now, can you see it on your...
I don't have my phone.
Here, do you get it?
No, I didn't get it.
How hard is it to you? Do you have your thing on?
I didn't realize you weren't on the string either.
Yeah, I guess I should have looked at it. I just assumed everybody was on it, so I didn't even...
Yeah, appears to be, have been sent to...
I should have looked at everybody.
Some of the council members. It doesn't look like Mr. Sandow is on here, nor unfortunately is the mayor.
Roger, I just sent it to you and mercy and Matt, all you guys.
So that's fine. The reason I brought it up is we had some discussion last Friday about different types of accounting methods, and that, and you did a good job of articulating why it was that you changed the reporting for some documents, and why we have a lot of entries that don't exist because transfers haven't been made as of this point in time. So I guess what I'm asking is, is there some way perhaps we can reflect what we think the anticipated transfers will be? Because in the past, we've seen differences in reporting for what the budget is versus the actual at the end of the year, because as you point out, there are always going to be changes. But it's good for us to have at least a baseline understanding of what we expect line items to be, what transfers can reasonably be anticipated, those sorts of things. Understanding that this is a moving target, and you're never going to be, you're never going to be exact, and changes are going to take place. So I just asked for your, give that some thought...
Sure.
And how to possibly project that next year or so. So instead of looking at zero entries, we at least have some sort of idea of where we think we're going to be ending up.
Absolutely. The process will evolve over the next couple of years. Part of it is that the other directors are at a disadvantage because we haven't really addressed anything in the capital improvement plan yet. The capital improvement plan really has to be done along with the operating budget, if not prior to, so that you can get your cash needs dealt with in the budgeting process for the CIP, and make sure that all comes together. So this is not a perfect budget. This is not a representation of my best work. But it's some of the basic changes that I thought we needed to make, most specifically the fund focus and the individual funds that get laid out as either positive revenue or negative revenue, or breaking even, so that we can make plans for the use of those funds and the things that they are important for. But yeah, there are improvements to be made, and that delineating of transfers as a budgetary process is an important part of that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Reading this email, and it makes absolutely zero sense to me.
I didn't understand.
Yeah, I didn't understand either.
I didn't understand it.
Most discombobulated.
I don't understand it.
Jury thoughts that I've ever, that we broaden the tax base by events through the city, you know, it just absolutely makes no sense, so.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
Oh, but...
I just wanted to ask about the conversation he'd had with you.
We had a nice little chat.
Fair enough.
Did you get the mail?
We can receive and file it, but it didn't...
No. Thank you, but no.
I don't get the gist of what he's asking, and...
I don't either, but I didn't know what to do, since he asked us to, I wasn't sure how to handle it. Yeah, I didn't, I, there wasn't really anything...
I guess we could consider it a written protest, or however you want to, it ought to be filed, since he asked.
Yeah, but yeah, I was like, I don't really know what...
If you want...
Is that the...
Is that how we do it?
Written comment, yeah, just receive and file it. End part of the hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
You would really have to come and talk so that we can interact.
He's not coming, yeah.
Yeah. It's tough to understand what he's saying.
I didn't get it.
You can understand it as well as I do, then.
Right. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dan, any of the department heads, anything in particular in their departments that maybe was of interest, or that you may have had a particular question regarding their hair, to be able to answer those, if that's the case?
Appreciate your time last Friday, Dan. You did a great job, and I had very little need to follow up with the rest of the department heads, so your breadth of knowledge is impressive.
Well, thank you. It's what you pay me for.
All right. If that's it, let's go to the agenda. Anything on the consent agenda?
Dick, I just wanted to clarify the difference between items 3D and 3E.
I was confused, too.
I think I get that when... I think I get that when I started reading the resolution that in turn had future draft resolutions attached to it. I just thought it was good to clarify that. Item D, we're setting a hearing regarding, for the MAC development required, development requirements and determining that a proposal yet to be submitted is adequate. So we're not actually approving that at this point. We're just setting the public hearing on that.
And Don is the author of these documents. If you'd like to ask direct questions of him either, please.
But we'll actually go over those again at the public hearing, right? Okay, that's why I want to make sure, too, because I was a little bit confused. I thought so, but then when we had D and E.
So, because, yeah, when I started reading over the language of the future resolutions, it said that we were approving that, so I just wanted to be clear.
Well, I did send you an email on E.
That's the one we got today from Marcy, right?
Yeah, E was the resolution that we passed last council, not your special council meeting, but driver council meeting. That wasn't done in air. So I don't know what the protocol is. Since we advertised it, I assume we should have a public hearing on it. But we're not expecting you to take any action on anything with that. So I'd say hold it and close it. D is, yeah, it's what we call a double-barreled approach. It's actually prepared by Alders Cooney Law Firm. And since we're disposing of some land and we don't meet the safe harbor on disposal, that we have to take other proposals.
That's good, because somebody asked me that question earlier, and I wasn't sure what our, okay.
And those proposals are due March twenty-fifth, and they would be presented to you on the eleventh if we receive them. And then make a recommendation on those. The other is that we have a development agreement that I think was forwarded in the packet, maybe under separate cover, dealing with, first, we had it with Iowa West Foundation, but then they had requested that it be changed to MAC Vision, MAC Ventures, which is one of the same. So the development agreements didn't change at all, except the name.
So we're not actually, we're gonna approve that when we do the public hearing?
On the eleventh of April.
Okay, that's what just, I just, yeah, okay. Perfect.
Other questions on the consent agenda?
Very quickly, for, and for Dan, finance. When we last had the list of bills, I was asking if you could give us the list that was sorted by payment amount rather than alphabetical. And I didn't see it as a part of what we were provided in the agenda packet. So still, still looking at that for that.
Basically, because I didn't get it done.
Fair enough.
He was busy with the budget.
Art had done one alphabetical and one numerical from, in descending order, so that if people wanted to see the most expensive bills paid, they could go to the one. Or if they were looking for a particular A E, they could go to the other, I guess.
And for the most part, that has been provided pretty, pretty regularly. Just the last couple of months, it just kind of seemed to drop out, so.
We'll only publish one of them. Well, they published the alphabetical.
Yeah. Okay. So can you provide me the other one, Dan? Understand. Thank you.
I did have one question for Larry on the list of bills. What function did M Space provide on the Emerald Ash Bor?
They handle the, we used the public information.
Oh, they set up the website and, okay, all right. Thanks.
Other questions on the consent agenda? Anything on the public hearings?
On four A, accepting the proposal by Brin Shore, I noted that that the documents related to that proposal were sent to us under separate cover, not provided as part of the agenda. So I'm kind of wondering at this point how we have a public hearing on a proposal that wasn't a part of the packet. In other words, the public doesn't have access to it in order to provide comment. I'm just wondering if perhaps it would be appropriate then to continue that public hearing until the next meeting so that we have a chance to put that material out in a form that can be accessed by the public.
Twenty is Brin Shore. I don't remember, to be honest with you. I don't have a lot of-
South Twenty-Eighth Street.
Yeah, twenty-nine units and nineteen semi-detached cottages.
Well, the question is, is how do you want it put on the public? Do you want a public notice? Do you want it on the website? I mean, what is satisfactory? I mean, the documents that we have are quite long. I mean, it's easy enough to put them on the website.
I guess-
It's a simple scan.
Yeah, I think loosely recalling that, there's about thirty pages or so that was sent to, sent to us. I'm assuming there's not more out there. Probably the, it would seem like the best way is whatever is being provided to us for consideration through the council packet is probably the best way to do that. I know there's going to be exceptions for very lengthy documents like, say, the budget. But I'm thinking that probably including that in the actual council packet is probably the best course of action.
Makes sense. People would know to look there if they're looking.
If it doesn't become so large, you can't get it to download. That'd be my biggest concern is that, you know, once it hits a certain size, it almost doesn't want to download, so.
Yep, and there are going to be things like that, such as, you know, West Broadway corridor plan, you know, very lengthy documents.
Well, as part of that as well, there are ways to shrink the PDF by about ten times without losing quality if we have the full version of it, Toby. That's what, that's what I do to be able to quickly pull it up. Otherwise, I can't get this to move that fast. I shrink it. It doesn't work on, like, if you're looking at blueprints or schematics or something, it makes those a little fuzzy. But like text, I mean, it reduces it to about ten percent of its original size.
And if we do, if we do end up posting something to a location on the website, that's part of the city council agenda, we probably want to provide some sort of direction as to where that can be provided for the public. So when they, when they see something being noted as a, as a public hearing, they know where to go to on the website if it's not published as part of the packet. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, I don't disagree that we need to do that. Did anybody receive any calls or concerns from anybody that downloaded the packet and was asking for the rest of the information? Did you get any calls? Don, did you get anything?
No.
No. Did any of the council people get any calls or concerns about it? I mean, I do agree, it needs to be out there. I just hate to hold up a public hearing unless we've had a question or concern. I would think if somebody that was interested in this public hearing had read what was in our packet, they would have said, well, wait a minute, it's not all there, and made a few phone calls. So that's my question, I guess.
Well, no, we have not heard anything from the public. It is consistent with what we had envisioned with the West Broadway plan. So that was one way that we got input.
Is this one?
You know, there's no, you know, I can't tell you what the ramifications are of delaying it two weeks. But just speaking as a staff member, okay? What is the protocol to put stuff in the council packet then? And I would like to have that defined. We have plans and specifications that are in large, you know, twenty-four by thirty-six, you know, copies. Do we give you all those? And so, you know, I just want to have the council give us some feedback, exactly what is it that you want? So we can avoid this in the future.
Perhaps one of the ways is things that could reasonably be put into the packet, size-wise, could. Otherwise, perhaps on the, and just thinking out loud, the agenda-
I could reasonably put plans and specs in a PDF form. That would be eight and a half by eleven that are not legible.
Well, no, but, I mean, things that, for example, if we're not getting it by email, then probably if we're not needing it for purposes of our decision, then the public wouldn't need it either. And, you know, they could come look at it, just like we can come. So I don't think it would necessarily, at least speaking for myself, it would be increasing what you're already providing to us. But I do take the point that if we're seeing it and we're making decisions on it, then the public should see it, too. Now, some of the things are going to be too large, and I don't know the structure of our website, but I looked to Marcy. It's probably an unfair question because it's maybe, it might be a technical IT type. But where it lists the, like, for example, study session or agenda only, agenda with packet, I don't know if it's possible then on the weeks that have something like three attachments to have those be separate clickable PDF bars for the weeks that have them. So if it's something larger, then if somebody's-
Separate download.
It's a separate download, thank you. If the page would accept that, because then, yeah, I take Sharon's point. I don't get asked a lot of questions, but at the same time, on the rare occasion I do, and I say, well, we don't put it out, it just, it would look better that we do.
Yeah, I agree. I just don't want to hold up. We've been holding up a lot of public hearings, and this was something that we voted to send a public hearing that we've had our packets since Wednesday of last week. So we could have had, you know, if there were concerns like that, we could have let Don or somebody know and get it put up. I, I just feel like that coming up on, you know, the eleventh hour and saying, well, we're going to hold up a public hearing because this didn't get, you know, put out in a way I'd like to see. I kind of hate to see that, huh?
But we'll react to whatever way the council wants to do on this. But I will just say is that we went through an extensive planning process. I don't recall anybody stating, no, we should not have multifamily development at Twenty-Eighth and Second Avenue. We just went through a rezoning where this body designated it multifamily. So what are we surprised by?
We put out a request for proposal that only one firm responded to.
So perhaps the way to proceed with this one, so that we do not prejudice this particular project based on the way we present it, that the public was, was given notice of the project. Fair enough. I do think as we move forward, they ought to see what we see, subject to, you know, the very rare things that they don't. But not hold up this particular one, but moving forward?
Well, I understand, too. You know, all we're saying is, is we said back in November or December that we were going to do this, we were going to have a hearing. We're going to have a hearing.
Well, I agree.
And, you know, I-
I just don't like people to not have it. I realize the vast majority of people aren't going to look at it, but I don't want to say to them, you didn't look at it because you weren't able to.
Well, just, I just, but understand, we're not seeking your authorization to dispose of it.
No, I know.
To enter a development agreement with it.
Sure.
It is really for us as staff to sit down with Brin Shore and work out the specific details to bring back to you. That's what we're asking.
Yep, I agree. I just think things, as a general, things we see, the public could come in and see. So having it available for them if they so choose, since we're already reducing it to electronic form for us, it ought to be available for them, too, even though it's not necessarily an action. I don't think it ought to hold up tonight. And I think maybe, maybe this would be a nice clean break of, as we move forward, doing that. So that, that way, I also think in the future, think about a situation in which someone might come back later and complain about it. Say, you know, I didn't see that. That wasn't out there. We can say, ah, but we did publish it right next to the agenda. It removes, forgive me, it's the lawyer in my head. It's removing, it's removing a technical problem. It's a very easy thing to solve so that somebody doesn't have a technical argument that could undo something once we've gone down the road. I don't like giving people easy ways to sabotage stuff.
Particularly on items where we have classed them specifically as public hearings. That was kind of my, my point on this one is, is since we, since we need to do a public hearing, I just wanted to make sure that we, that we provide as much notice as possible so that people know what we're looking at.
I agree. Would you, would you think on this one, I hate to, I hate to penalize the, this, especially since, as Don has mentioned, that this, tonight is not actually disposing of the property or even an intent to dispose. Of letting this one move forward with the understanding that now we'll have these things posted on the website going forward?
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see any contention, and that wasn't the point of the inquiry at all. And, yeah, and at best, I was just suggesting, you know, perhaps we can do the public hearing tonight and continue it over just in case. I don't know if there's any legal prejudice or it's holding up the project. That's not my intention. So I don't think there's a lot of controversy attached to this either way.
I think maybe we ought to let this one through. Since if this were, if we were disposing of the property, I would agree that, yes, the people obviously would need to see the plans. But on this particular one, since it will come back. And your point, I think, generally speaking, is very well taken. So I think then, I think that's best practice as we move forward.
Perfect. Anything else on the public hearings? Anything on ordinances under first? Ordinances under first? Just a moment.
I think I got really confused on one.
Okay. Ordinances under third, six A is gone, isn't it?
Yeah, that was my question. I was like-
I think we waived the third on that.
We did waive the third, but it's actually printed on there that we did waive the third, so I'm not-
Yeah.
So we can just delete that one?
I got really confused on some of these as to why.
Way to go, Don.
Well, that was your, the guy from Smith Peterson who-
Yeah, didn't we waive that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, my former colleague from years ago, yeah.
So do we just delete that at the start of the?
Yeah, I think so.
The notes, something to show up on your-
Anything else under the ordinances for third?
I've never had the pages.
Was that the one that we're changing and making a public hearing on?
Okay.
The eleventh?
Air loading page.
Oh, you're fine.
No, we were just going back, and excuse me for jumping around. On, on four F, resolution sixteen forty-five regarding the MAC development agreement, which is not yet prepared, and there are no materials actually provided for it in the packet, and I'm wondering if perhaps that's still appearing there just as as a, as printer. Four F.
I thought that was the one we were changing to the eleventh.
I think our intent was to go two weeks from now, isn't it, or is that the?
Eleven, right. I thought we were, but still, no? Yeah, April eleventh. That's what I thought. So should that be changed to?
Actually, I give you some wrong information. On the consent agenda, you have two resolutions. One is, and that is on the MAC Ventures proposal, to set a hearing and to request proposals, okay? I think I perhaps confused you by saying three E was the public hearing that we set the last normal council meeting, and actually it is four F.
Okay.
That's the one you should have a hearing on and take no action.
Take no action. Okay.
So it's, it's four F that we should take no action, is it?
But what do we do then after the hearing? We just don't do anything?
There was no information on four F.
Nobody make a motion, I guess.
And we just be silent and then just-
And it dies?
Doesn't die. Doesn't die, does it, where?
You want to postpone it? Yes.
Right, that's, yes, you're right. That's, yes, you're right, yeah.
Their attorney's working on the rewrite of the...
It wouldn't be a substantive denial unless...
And we'll be, have set a new public hearing for this for April eleventh prior to getting to, to 4F, so can you just make reference back to that?
Uh, that makes sense.
You can start with a new...
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I was confused between the consent agenda and the public hearing, like, what is what?
They, they had, they had a timeline that they wanted to meet for their board, and then...
Because if we take it off, then the public hearing won't occur, and we have to...
Put that in there as a placeholder, thinking that we were still trying to meet their timeline. We met last week, um, and they said, April eleventh is good enough for us, so...
If we're not going to act on it, why do we need a public hearing?
That's what had me all, yeah, okay. So then...
Well, I think we're scheduling the public hearing for the eleventh, right?
That's correct. That will happen on the public, considered to accomplish prior to you getting to this public hearing.
Oh, that's already in the...
So you can make some mention of the fact that you've rescheduled that hearing, but, you know, but if you won't, if anybody's here to speak on it, then you can invite them to speak at that time.
Okay, so then we'll just say that...
Instead of just making a...
Yeah, so we'll just say this is actually been rescheduled for April eleventh, but if someone wants to speak, you can't.
If somebody's here to speak.
And if nobody stands up, then we just move on to the next item.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fine.
Thank you.
Way to confuse us, then.
Um, anything between the public hearings and the third consideration? Anything on the resolutions? Um, applications for permits and cancellations? See you at seven.
The Mid-America Center is the Heartland's premier entertainment and convention center. February twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, there's a million ideas to take home at the Fourteenth Annual Council Bluffs Home and Landscaping Show. The same weekend, elite athletes hit the mat at the twenty-sixteen NJCAA National Wrestling Championships. And over at the convention center, March twelfth and thirteenth, the Callahan Craft Fair makes its return. Remember, the MAC offers free parking for all events, tickets, information, and more at midamericacenter.com.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get personalized customer service like nowhere else, like our travel club.
Come see us, bank with us, and travel with us. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.